Welcome, everybody, to the meeting of the school committee. As we've done in the past, if people have comments, they're more than welcome to put them in the chat and we can address them. At times, we will address them when it comes up, when we believe that comes up on the agenda. If people have public comments they wish to make, they can, that are not on tonight's agenda, you're more than welcome to put them into the chat now. And what we'll do is I'll go through with the student rep and the school committee members and we'll deal with that afterwards. So I'll let you do that and I will say the next item on our agenda is the student rep Natalia. So Natalia, welcome.
Thank you. So for this week's update, for CPAC on Friday, February 12th at 6:30 PM, CPAC will be hosting a virtual paint night of hard C poppy. Tickets are $10 and all painting supplies are included within your ticket price. The pickup for the materials will be on February 9th behind the mech from 5 to 7 PM. You can register at poppy.mcpac.org. Registration will be open until February 5th. For the Macs update, in an effort to celebrate Valentine's Day during these times with current safety guidelines, the Mac will not be exchanging Valentine's cards, but will be celebrating by having jammy and craft days. Students are being invited to wear pajamas to school and the classes will be creating some fun Valentine's Day crafts, which will they, which they will be taking home. These activities are scheduled for the pre-K in all of the kindergarten classes. They continue to try, try to give the students and staff extended mass breaks or recess. It is strange to have to tell the students that they cannot share and cannot play tag, but this is the world we are currently living in. The students, I mean, the staff and administration look forward to the times when they return to normal. This week, there is no update for the MKG or the HBB. But moving on to the Nichols update, Nichols Middle School Boys and Girls Basketball Teams are doing very well this season. Both teams are undefeated and have demonstrated great sportsmanship. They are proud of their hard work, teamwork and dedication. The school, the school council is planning school-wide events for Kindness Month in February. Students and faculty are participating in Flannel Fridays and there are two Disney Days coming up on February 9th and 10th. NMS School Council sent out their family survey this past Monday and the results will be shared at the February 23rd meeting. The student survey will go out next week. The next PTA meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 3rd. Nichols Middle School Faculty Staff and Administrative Team have begun their studies on the importance of social and emotional learning during their monthly professional learning community meetings, which is led by Carol Gregory and Mrs. Latander. For MHS, for the update for MHS, last week, GSA held their no-name calling week and it held a display in the main lobby. They did an amazing job of spreading kindness within the school. Last Tuesday, January 26th, the entire 11th grade took their PSATs. MHS Student Council successfully held their first virtual movie night last night on January 27th, where they watched the movie Murder Mystery. The second semester will begin next Tuesday, February 2nd. Updated student schedules can be found on Aspen. As we approach and begin second semester, there's still a tutoring opportunity. The MHS National Honors Society is offering tutors to anyone in need for extra help in any subject. Fill out the Google form that can be found on Bernadine's Bulletin and reach out to Aileen Petty or Mrs. Levy for any questions.
Thank you very much, Natalia. Does anyone have any questions for Natalia? Thank you, Natalia. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is from school committee members. Does any school committee member wish to bring anything up? Meg, you have your hand up.
I just wanted to talk about the budget subcommittee real quick.
Sure.
So we've met three times. We have a meeting next week. We've met with a couple of the departments and I really just wanted to say thank you to Sarah for making everything very cohesive. And thank you to the members that we've met with already. We met with PPS, we met with Health, Athletics and Technology last night. And they all gave us some great information and could easily answer our questions. So we're in the process of going through all the budget and I didn't know if Rich wanted to add anything to that, not to put you on the spot, Rich.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you. I, I've enjoyed quite a bit the budget subcommittee, more than I think you might expect when you hear the, the word budget. I guess this is for the, you know, for the folks watching, but it is a really awesome opportunity to get really in the weeds and, and see what we're actually spending our money on and, and get to hear a lot of the justifications behind each thing. And of course, right now, for me, being a new budget subcommittee member, it's like the honeymoon phase. You know, we just get to ask nice questions and we hear nice answers. Of course, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions, but it's been a really awesome experience for me. And I also agree, the Sarah's done an excellent job and so have all the directors that we've spoken to so far. So I'm looking forward to doing more of that tomorrow, right, Meg? Tomorrow night? So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, guys. You know, I've done it for a while. I appreciate you guys stepping up to do it. Rich is right. It is a good chance to learn and get a better understanding and, you know, over and over again, one of the only real authorities the school committee has is over the budget, so it's an important subcommittee. So I thank you guys for doing it. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? I just want to say two things. First of all, I want to thank the fire chief Lance Benzen, Lance Benjamino, because he worked out for testing for all town employees. So he did a really good job with that, so I want to thank him for that personally. And also, I want to thank Hannafords for stepping up. There will be a vaccine site. There are very, unfortunately, there are very few sites in the South Shore currently. I know the delegates, the people who are elected to office have been complaining to the governor about the lack of sites, but we should be fortunate that Hannaford stepped up and there will be a site. So we appreciate that and that's fantastic. So with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent's report and welcome the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and members of the committee and good evening to all, all of you. I would reiterate, having been at all the budget subcommittee meetings, it's been a smooth process. It's a learning process when you first start it. But once you become accustomed to sort of the manner in which we do it, it's hopefully informative for the members of the committee so that they can make informed decisions with regard to next year's budget. So I do thank them for, for their participation and attention to detail and their duties. So thank you very much. My report this evening begins with COVID-19 updates has, has since, since COVID-19 appeared. I just wanted to touch on a few things tonight with regard to COVID-19. First of all, I want to again bring the community's attention to the data dashboard, which continues to be updated each and every Friday. The numbers in our schools are generally dwindling a little bit. Had a little bit of an uptick there after the holidays, but hopefully they're steadying off and going down. The town numbers are down this week and gradually headed down and hopefully a, a negative, the numbers in a negative direction and obviously that's a positive direction for the community in, in general. Our sort of, our COVID cases in school have not necessarily mirrored the community, but they've been comparable in, in terms of a small percentage. So been looking at that, certainly. I want to inform you that I just was informed today by the technology department, Dr. Melanie Gates, that and through the work, collaboration, collaborative work with Sarah Hickey, notifying operational services at the state level with our dismay with regard to our order of 2,000 Chromebooks, that apparently they may start coming in a piecemeal. We've been informed that 170 of them are on the way. Even though that's all a small number compared to the 2,000, it is a step in the right direction and hopefully those will be delivered very, in a very short time. And looking forward to that. I do also want to recognize the ongoing concerns and frustrations of the community with regard to the cohorts that we have in place now. It, unfortunately, the guidelines at the state level have not changed. The guidelines regarding social distancing have not changed. And so we continue to be only able right now to bring students in with, and we're limited by those guidelines and we're limited by transportation guidelines. So our numbers are limited. I would tell you that as an administrative team, we are looking at this. We're looking at trying to get more students in. Perhaps some of our younger students have explored the possibilities with first student and begun that discussion with if there's any room in our buses for K and 1 and then are there any room in our schools? So we have begun those discussions. We're just about at the midpoint of this year. So there'll be more at the next meeting. We're gonna try to see if we can get more students in, especially at our youngest level, those students who are learning to read, which is so important. We are fortunate, I think, as a district to have a model in place that is, to me, a, a better model than a lot of school systems around, as I've reiterated in the past, that we do, our, our, our students see their teachers five days a week. And whether it be in school or online, they do have a full schedule, a full day and they are working with a teacher. So I, I think that's important and obviously there are fragments and breaks and things like that. But we do have a model that is working for us now. Obviously, we'd like to see everyone back in school. And it is quote unquote getting old. There's no doubt about it. It is something that wears on everyone, especially families and, and faculty and schools and, and, you know, I speak as, obviously as a, as an administrator for the school system, but also as a parent. It can be frustrating. There's no doubt about it, but the, the pandemic, the COVID-19 is still out there, changing forms in some instances, becoming more aggressive in other instances and, and we need to continue to be watchful and continue to maintain social distance and, and continue to have those precautions that we've had in place. And if we possibly can do something in the future with bringing more students in, it would be our youngest students first and we'd try to do something in those buildings. There's been frustration. I've heard comments about, why don't we use the old LDL, the Lincoln D Lynch School that it's rented out to Massasoia, but they don't seem to be using it. They have a lease agreement with us, Massasoia Community College in the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts and they, they have sole possession of that while that's in the lease. So we really can't use that space. What about the old high school when, when the new high school opens? That building is scheduled to be demolished as part of a phasing program and that becomes a parking lot because they need, we need the parking up there and that's part of this whole plan. And that's already scheduled, so that building's not available. What about the school street building? Well, the school street school is rented to the Reed's Academy and that building is full. So that's not a building that we can use because we have a lease agreement with the Reed's Academy. Reed's Academy is opening up a new building up by the Rotary. Next year, we may have the use of the school street school if that's possible. So that's a possibility for next year, but it's not a possibility for this year. So like I said, I know that there are ongoing frustrations out there. There are concerns out there that the students are not getting the education they deserve. And as educators, we share those concerns and we'll do everything we can to get our students back in as soon as possible. And we have had discussions on it. We'll have ongoing discussions about this. But I just want folks to realize that those comments that come in and we hear and our email to us are not, they don't fall on deaf ears. But we are in a position where we can only do what we can do with our, with our, with our safety guidelines and our social distancing. When students take off the mask to eat lunch, they have to be six feet apart. And you have to have room for all those students and you have to have supervision for all those students. When students get on a bus, we can only have, on, on a 77 passenger bus, we can only have 27 students. So I know there are certain buses out there that people see go by that might have eight or 10 or 12 students on it and those are the buses we're looking at. Those are the buses we're saying, maybe there's more room. And so that's some of the work we're doing. So I just want people to know that we are working on that. I also want to move on to the, and we can also go back if anybody, the school committee has any comments or questions or, or comments or suggestions. The vaccines, I, Rich, the chair mentioned Hannafords. Hannafords is a, is a spot that is gonna start vaccines. They've already started to make appointments for Phase 1. And hopefully when Phase 2 rolls around, we're in a place where, you know, some of our educators can begin that process and we'll have more sites that'll be open hopefully shortly. The sooner we can get folks vaccinated, the sooner we can reach herd immunity, herd immunity, I think the better off we'll be as a school system. That's for sure, no doubt about it. And I also wanted to again acknowledge the fact that, and Rich had said that, Mr. Young had said that the chair, that the, the fire department and the town have opened up a, a testing site for town employees and emergency responders. If town employees want to make an appointment through, and there was an email that went out to all town employees this week. So that's helpful. Those, those results are coming back in 24 to 36 hours. So we do thank town manager and Chief Benjamino in cooperation with MIT and Harvard, a program. And so that's in place now. So we'll continue with that. So those are some COVID-19 updates. I consider, I touched on a number of topics there, but I can certainly answer any questions the committee might have with regard to this particular item.
Sorry. One question that came in was about buses and asking kids, parents to drive their kids. We're still bound to make, to have to transport kids at a certain level. And so by, even by parents wanting to bring their kids in, we still have to plan in case something happens. For example, somebody, the car's not working, a wide variety of things. If they're legally allowed to take a bus, we have to plan for that, correct?
That's correct. I, I, for example, I do drive my daughter every day to school when she's in session. And I get in line at Tiger Drive at Nichols Middle School at, you know, 7:25 in the morning queued up with a number of other cars and a number, obviously a number of buses. And it is crowded with a lot of parents that drop off and a lot of parents have dropped off. I, my oldest daughter's 27. I dropped her off at Nichols Middle School. There are also, there are always a number of parents that do drop off, but there are also a number of parents that can't. And we have to cover those routes. And even like I said, those, those numbers look sparse at times when the bus rolls by. But if there's a child on Colby Drive that needs a, a bus to school, we need to provide that. So we certainly need to canvas the town with our buses and make sure that every student gets a ride. Now, the question is at kindergarten and first grade, is there enough room to get that, those other kindergartners, the other half of the kindergarten and first grade in? It's tight, but there's a possibility we may be able to do it. Then we have to look at school space and is it possible we can do it? And those are the things we're looking at now, so.
Any other questions? Teresa, go ahead.
Yes, well, I mean, obviously I have a perspective of, of a parent, as a parent and as a school committee member and as an educator. So working in another district, I think it's important to recognize that every district in this state looks different from each other. So while it's wonderful to take a look at what other districts are doing and obviously I know you're doing that, Mr. Lynch, and that's fantastic, we are unique. We are 72 square miles of, of space in Middleborough. And I think people just kind of need to hear that, you know, we started with a model that I think one of the best around from the beginning in September. And I'm seeing that in these last six months. I'm very, very pleased as a parent. And I do have that unique perspective of having been able to get into the schools and do that walkthrough with you, Mr. Lynch. Space is being utilized. It is, there's not a lot of extra space. So I just feel like everyone kind of needs to hear that from a parent who has that perspective and just know that I am very pleased, but I also know that you're all doing everything you can for Middleborough and that you've put our students first from the beginning, love, last summer when this all hit. And, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Farley. I just, and I, and I, I thank you for your comments, but I would also tell you that we, like you said, we are working on it. And, and where we can, we're gonna try to do what we can for those, especially those youngest people. Cause I, and I realize and you, you know, you've, you as a parent voiced frustrations, I as a parent voiced frustrations. Where it's one of those times, we get to this point sometimes and we've all been dealing with this now, getting close to a year with all the, the life changes being necessary by the pandemic. But none have affected more than, than perhaps our youngest populations and, and it's school age population. So we'll do whatever we can to, to, to get them in as quickly as we possibly can. The vaccine's very important, though. I would stress that to our community. Vaccine's very important.
Any other questions before I ask Brian to move on? Thank you, everybody. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, moving on, we have Ryan Sylvia. I think he might be. I see him in the, in the backstage. So he's gonna pop on and sort of give us an update and I'll stay, if I can stay on mic just because Ryan's working with the athletic directors for the South Shore League and I'm working with the super tennis for the South Shore League. And we both meet on Friday mornings, compare notes and move forward. But we do have some, a little bit of breaking news tonight that Ryan can perhaps let everybody know with regard to some, some upcoming senior nights.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Lynch. Thank you, school committee. I had a few other updates too, but with that introduction, I'll jump right into the, the senior nights. We're kind of finalizing plans for an in-person Senior Day experience for all of our, our varsity teams or our teams that have seniors on them. The hope right now is, or the plan, the preliminary plan is to be able to allow at least two parents or guardians for every senior athlete and, and do our normal, you know, Senior Day presentation. Everybody will have to be, I said normal, but obviously following the guidelines, distanced, masked. And with families that live in the same household, they'll be able to, you know, get together for a picture and do whatever tradition they typically do. I know the ice hockey team, for example, gets out on the ice and, and gets together for a picture, a family photo and, and maybe some flowers for, for mom and things like that. So those plans look like they're all going to be able to happen. Unfortunately, it's, it is going to be limited to senior, senior families only, senior students and their parents or guardians. So we, we discussed the possibility of, you know, one event, one, one game where spectators would be allowed at some level within the guidelines and similar to what we've heard about the schools, the facilities, the spacing in our gyms. It, it's, it's really prohibitive and it wouldn't really be fair for us to allow some games to have that and others to not. So, so that's kind of where we're at with the spectators right now. It'll be limited to seniors only for, for one game. I think I, I've got it all there, Mr. Lynch. Is that, is that right in terms of senior?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. And we'll finalize that tomorrow morning with our meetings. A few other just quick updates, that some kind of exciting news in some ways. We got, we have two weeks left of the season. We, we do have the ability to spill over into the February vacation week, but we're gonna try, most of the teams, especially the sub varsity teams, will be done before February vacation. And all of the teams are gonna have some kind of postseason experience. There's no state tournament, but there'll be a league tournament for all of our sub varsity teams. A single elimination tournament. It'll just be a random seed and the home team will have, or the higher seed will have the home, the home game. And the varsity tournaments will be similar. Those will be seeded based off of record. And those tournaments may spill over into the February vacation. So the varsity teams have to be kind of ready for that. If they advance into the tournament, they, they might go into February vacation. The exciting news I, I was talking about, we have 11 teams going right now and none of those teams have more than one loss. So from a competitive standpoint, we're having a great year in, in winter sports. The boys varsity basketball team, ice hockey team, girls swim team are all in first place in the league currently. We have four teams, sub varsity teams out of five that are undefeated. And the remaining, I think it's three teams have only one loss. So really, really great job by our students and our coaches and dealing with the tough situation and still going out and performing at a high level. So that, that's great. And then I just wanted to touch on the live streaming and recordings again. We're doing, we really are doing the best we can. We hate telling people that they, they can't attend the games. So we're doing the best we can to get the live streams up and running as right, you know, 15 minutes before game time. And we have a few different ways that we do it. Probably the most effective way is in our MHS gym with the, with the National Federation High Schools Network Camera. It's the best viewing experience. It requires a small fee, which people I know have, have opted to pay for. And, and even at times, there were a couple of games where that went out and we had a backup where we went on Facebook Live or YouTube, which is what we do for our other, our other facilities.
Two hour, not out.
Ice Hockey Rink and the, the Mech Gym, the Nichols Middle School Gym. So thank you for your patience. I know sometimes the stream goes out and we do the best we can with our staff and some of our volunteers to make sure those streams get up and running again. And then the next is just gonna be Fall 2. The winter season officially ends Feb, Sunday, February 21st. And Fall 2 Football Volleyball Unified Track, I'm sorry, Unified Basketball Indoor Track all start on February 22nd, that Monday. So we're gearing up with our coaches to get ready for that. We already have over 200 registrations for that season. So looking forward to that. And just a quick Masba update. Our Masba group, our Middleborough All Sports Boosters Association meets regularly once a month all year. And starting up next month, we will start our weekly meetings and planning for our golf tournament, which looks, it, it may look a little bit different this year. We haven't finalized anything, but the plan is to have that tournament on the first Sunday in May, which is May 2nd this year, with the possibility of, you know, golf only with some, you know, special, special events at certain holes and things like that. But just eliminating possibly the dinner and the food and the gathering aspect of the tournament. So mark that on your calendars and hopefully as things start to look better with the pandemic, we'll be ready to play some golf and raise some money for the Boosters Association.
Mr. Sylvia, before you say anything else, I just wanted to, I had a question from a parent this week and we had discussed this, but I wanted, you know, the folks in the community to hear it. Parent had asked about, you know, why are parents not allowed and yet seemingly news photographers allowed at games? And I just, I want you to tell them what the South Shore League's position is on that in terms of the newest media.
Sure. This, we discussed this at length within our, and there were some different opinions on it, but what we came up with as athletic directors was as long as both schools administration agreed that having someone from the press was acceptable and would be following the guidelines, being at least six feet, if not more, from the playing surface and mask and had a kind of a designated area, that it would be a positive thing for our students because we want that press coverage. We want our students to have their name in the paper, their picture in the paper or posted on social media in a positive way for whatever their, their, you know, sport they're playing and being recognized for those things. And, and just felt that that was important. And it really only happens at our varsity events. We don't get a lot of press coverage for sub varsity games. You know, newspapers trying to publish standings and see which teams are hot and which teams are doing well throughout the year. So that was kind of the, the mindset there. You know, we can't let, if we, if we let parents in, how, how do you determine who can come in? We need to limit the number of people that can come in. And, and that's difficult to do with the news, you know, with the press. And we did limit it to one, one to two press, a photographer and a reporter. We're not letting, you know, mobs of people in to watch the game.
Thank you. I just wanted the folks out there to hear that and, and, you know, it's an effort to memorialize those games somehow for students. And there are parents that still keep scrapbooks for their kids so that down the road, folks can look at those. Because, you know, every once in a while, you do look back in a scrapbook and remember when, if you will. And hopefully their memories may not be great that the fans weren't there, but at least there'll be some type of memorial to them in terms of the, the pictures and, and of the game, maybe the game of the year or the game they had or whatever, what have you. So thank you, Ryan. Any questions from the school committee for Mr. Sylvia?
Anybody have any questions? Ryan, just thanks a lot. I mean, again, I can't mention enough how much we appreciate the coaches and the students for what they're doing. It's, it's a weird season to begin with and, and thank for you to the Social League for at least offering opportunities for Senior Night. I think that's fantastic and at least it changes somewhat.
Thank you, Mr. Young, and, and thank you for allowing us to have athletics this year and we'll, we'll keep working our way through it. We got a couple of seasons left.
Thank you. And I will move on if there are no other questions from the committee. I know that we had talked about at the beginning of the meeting prior to coming live about pushing a couple items up because of some childcare issues. So I have no problem doing that. If you want to move the school calendar changes up, Mr. Chair?
Sure, that would be perfect. So the, we discussed at last meeting that the school calendar would have to change because of the new high school. So we've essentially moved the two professional development days that bookended the February vacation, made them regular days and then moved that to April vacation to bookend the April vacation. The, the reason they have to bookend the April vacation is contractually. We agreed with the union that they would have some time to reset that, to pack their classroom and then reset it in the new building. So that, that was part of the, the plan. The only other thing to calendar, which we'll discuss at length, that doesn't fall in, right now in the school year, was the state added a holiday. So we included the holiday in June. It's Juneteenth. The superintendent and I, because the holiday fell on a Saturday, we have the option to either put it on a Friday or a Monday. Right now, school for kids will end on the Friday. So that's why we moved it to the So that's why we moved it to the Monday, because it didn't make sense to have to bring people back the Monday, have them go to another week to start. So that's why we moved it to that day. As of next year and going forward, the holiday will fall in a normal progression of calendar and we'll have to, when it falls on a Sunday, it immediately goes to Monday. It falls during the weekend. Normally falls, we'll deal with that day. But when it falls on Saturday, we have an option. So that's why we discussed that piece. So any questions about the calendar itself? Then Chair would entertain a motion to approve the change to the calendar.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing, obviously a roll call since we're in this format. Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, and the next item here, we're pushing up a little bit here because it requires a vote. Our policy updates. As you know, we do have a policy subcommittee. These are updates, though, that we, the school committee had voted and agreed that if they are just changes in dates, names, laws that need to be changed in these policies, that we can change these. The policies themselves have not changed. There's nothing in them and the intent of them that has changed. It's just housekeeping items, housekeeping times that are in these policies that are necessary. And as we move forward to a review by the state of tier-focused monitoring, this was something that was highlighted and brought to our attention as something, these are policies, three policies that needed updating and needed changes to reflect current modern language in case law, et cetera. So those three policies, normally a policy goes through three readings. These, as the school committee had agreed, if there are such policies that we're just changing slightly, then we could vote them in one meeting. And those were included in your Dropbox.
And just to add to that, the, when legally the policy changes, our policy has to adopt the legal requirements. And so this is all that's doing. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the three changes to the policy on homeless students, educational opportunity for military children, and educational opportunity for children in foster care.
So moved.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Oakley?
Mr. Chair, it sounds like this is very routine. But just for someone who hasn't come across this before, I wondered if it would be possible to just describe very briefly what specifically had changed in these. Is it just like, for instance, the legal reference to the McKinney-Vento Act or something like that that changed? Or?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Are these just very slight changes in words that modern McKinney-Vento has revised? They may have been changed. I can get you specifics, Mr. Oakley, on exactly the words that were changed in each of these policies, so you know. I do not have them highlighted on my policies either. So, but these are policies that were brought forward through Carolyn Lyons, the PPS director, and Dr. Melanie Gates. And we just, these are basically changes in just slight changes in the law. McKinney-Vento has a Part A. And so that was amended, but there are also changes. So I can get you those changes. I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me, and I should, but I can certainly get those for you.
Mr. Chair, through you. I have 100% confidence in our policy subcommittee. And so I was just more curious for my own education. And if I could ask a request, possibly for future policy updates, is it possible that when we have those policy updates in our Dropbox, that they could always be like a track changes version, just so it's real easy to scroll through and see what has changed?
Agreed.
But otherwise, I'm, the premise of this policy, policy update sounds great. And it's just very routine and slight changes, so I'm not opposed to it at all.
And through you, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can do this for the next meeting. And we can change these in the next meeting. And I can bring to your attention the slight changes that are in these policies and highlight them for the next meeting. They can wait.
I would defer to the chair on that. I'm totally fine with it. If it were a major change, I would ask yes, but this sounds fine.
Well, no, so just so everyone understands, although they are changes, in essence, to the policy, the new policy is in effect now because it's the law. So even though we are changing our policy, we're just adhering to the law. So we can make, we can track those changes, Rich. I think that's fine. We can definitely do that. We can also have these copies updated so everybody can see the track changes. That's not a problem. But whether we do it today or we do it two weeks from now, it's not going to change anything because the school would still have to follow the law as opposed to our policy that was out of date, if that makes sense to anybody. So it really doesn't matter either way, whichever way the committee wants to go.
I'm fine voting on this today. I read through all the policies and there's nothing weird in there, so.
Okay. Then with that, Chair would.
Mr. Chair, the main changes in these are languages around what's called best interest determinations for foster care. Foster care rules have changed and they basically require districts to provide transportation, et cetera, which is new, and that had to be included in these policies. So that's definitely part of it. So, and I thank Dr. Gates for popping those, for popping that check to me to let me know that.
So any further discussion? So seeing that the chair does have a motion and second, pending somebody asking for a delay, and Chair seeing that, and then we'll bone on it. Teresa?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So thank you very much for that. And so, thank you, Brian. If you can continue, please.
Thank you. So those are two action items. And now we, there was a memo in your Dropbox with regard to high school. And I had asked Paul to sort of articulate that for the purposes of the CARES Act and reimbursement. It's much more detailed, but it's something that when we request reimbursement for, when the fire department requests reimbursement for CARES, or when somebody contracts the virus, they have a substitute firefighter come in. And so they described that this person was out with COVID, this person took their place. With the school systems, it's different. With the scheduling and filling the high school schedule, COVID has made us alter the high school schedule to accommodate such things as class size, limit of 18, et cetera. So we've had to bring in extra people. We've had to ask teachers who teach three classes to teach a fourth, a block of 85 minutes. So we've really had to alter things. So I asked Paul to sort of articulate that. And I'll sort of feature what he wrote in his letter or his memo to myself, the chair, and Sarah Hickey, the business manager, for the benefit of the Plymouth County CARES folks. The first area at the high school of need was the limitation of class size, the COVID-19 guidelines. We could really only fit 18 in a class at the high school because of the space in the current high school. We also could not fit students, we could not put students in the middle rooms of the high school, if you're familiar with the high school, because those rooms did not have windows. So we were forced to make changes with regard to that. Normally in a high school class, there'd be 20 to 28 students. We were down to 18. So we had to add more classes to accommodate all of the students. The second area for the high school of need was the need to fill out schedules. And when we reduced electives, because we had to reduce electives, we had to offer new electives in some cases. And so with the bill, there were, they eliminated many electives. And then when we eliminated the left, the electives, it left holes in the student's schedule, so it needed to be filled by full-time courses. So that was the second area. The third area of need was on the large impact was 140 students who are totally remote at the high school on the online learning academy, and we had to fill their schedules. We had a, we basically had a remote high school of 140 students, and we had to fill their schedules. We agreed with the Middleborough Education Association that students wouldn't be taught in school and out of school in the same class, the same time with live streaming. So the students that went home and are remote would be fully remote, and so their classes are fully remote. So that 140 students that required to fill that. For example, our former, our friend, our former president of the Middleborough Education Association, Mr. Frank Catino, is teaching four math classes, all of them remote, all of them full. And he's doing so so that we can fill those schedules of those students who are remote. Because you've sort of fragmented this whole high school schedule by taking 140 students out. But you have to fill their schedules with whatever topics they need or subjects they need to fulfill their requirements. So it's been a challenge there. And in, he just, in closing, he just talks about the extra teaching positions and being critical to allow the high school to remain open and provide the course offerings they need and deserve. That he deeply appreciates the sport of the need at Middleborough High School to allow our students to continue. So we are filing with COVID, with Plymouth County, for COVID money to sort of pay out these extra classes and the long-term subs that we had to bring in to help out with these classes. So he was just able to document that for you and for Plymouth County and for the school district. So we had a memo stating that. So that's basically his memo. If you get a chance, if you haven't read it, it's a must-read. So. And that's Mr. Branding's input with regard to the justification and rationale for all of the extra sort of personnel and courses that were needed at the high school to fill schedules. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will move on then to, Sarah Hickey is in the backstage, and she's going to come forward with just some updates. They've already been covered in some instances, but she's going to bring some additional color to it.
And I'm going to add some surprise things that we hadn't already talked about, Superintendent Lynch. So thank you for having me here and thank you, school committee members. You've heard a lot about Plymouth County tonight and Plymouth County retirement, I'm sorry, Plymouth County reimbursement for COVID money. And I just wanted to add to my report that I submitted 30, approximately $30,000 in reimbursements to Chief Benjamina yesterday. I thank him for all the work that he does on this. And that brings our total to just a little bit under $630,000 that the school department has submitted for reimbursement. So that would be an FY21 budget update. For FY22, as you heard earlier, Superintendent Lynch and I are working with the Budget Subcommittee. The budget book has been produced and we've gone through, we've gone through the different requests from the department heads and principals. And we're now in the process of meeting with department heads and principals. We had meetings yesterday. We have meetings tomorrow. We have meetings next week as well. And then any callback meetings for anything that needs further clarification will happen. So we received information from the town manager today about our, what our expectations are for the budget from the town. And so now that we have that number, we'll be able to really pare down and do what we need to do in order to meet the number that he has given us. So stay tuned. More information to come in the, in the form of a final budget in about three weeks to four weeks.
Mr. Chair, any questions from the committee?
Any questions for me? Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Sarah. I just wondered if the timeframe for receiving reimbursements has been pretty regular throughout this or if it can kind of fluctuate?
It's funny, I haven't seen, so the way the reimbursements work is when I submit something to Chief Benjamina, I submit at the same time a spreadsheet to the town accountant. Say it was $10,000 and it was $2,000 for each school. So I'll have, on the spreadsheet for the town accountant, I'll have the line numbers for each individual school for the $2,000 for each school. But on the spreadsheet for Chief Benjamina, it's just $10,000 to this vendor. And so the money goes back to the town. I'm not sure of the schedule of that. And the town accountant puts the money back into our operating budget. And sometimes, you know, it really just depends on his schedule. He's very busy. So there was one period where we noticed that one week he had the October numbers in and the next week he had the November numbers in. So it's not, we like to think of the, you know, those big checks that get presented to lottery winners. Plymouth County is not coming to us once a month with a, here's your, it's more of a behind-the-scenes. The money goes to the town and then the town puts it in all of the places where it came from originally.
Great, thank you. It's just happy to hear that it's, we're getting the money, one way or another. So that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I had mentioned earlier technology update and I mentioned some computers coming our way. Certainly don't have enough at this point to offer MCAS as a computer-based exam. And that ties in with my final number on the number eight, MCAS update. And your update for tonight is basically, the state requires us to do computer-based testing now. But this year, they are making accommodation an exception to those districts that can't offer computer-based testing. As you know, every computer we had has gone out to families and individuals, whether they be home-based or whether they be hybrid, whatever model they might be in. And normally, we sort of take those computers and use those as our, as our testing vehicles, basically. We can't do that this year. We were hoping, obviously, to get those computers in. You've heard a lot about these 2,000 computers. But what happened as of tomorrow, there was a deadline for requesting what's called a computer-based waiver for this year. So as a result of our inability to provide the computers to take the tests, we're going to ask for the paper tests, which are the old-school paper tests that were in place for years and years that they just got away from, but we're going to have to move to those. So I have requested, on behalf of the Middleborough Public Schools, a waiver request from the computer-based testing for the Henry B. Berklin, the M. Mary K. Good, both grades three, four, and five, all tests. And then the Nichols Middle School, the entire battery is tested for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We have some outdated Chromebooks there that we, even though we have sort of a one-on-one, we have a lot of kids that are bring-your-own device, and we have a lot of students that have the older devices that simply cannot be utilized for this exam. So I have asked for a waiver from the computer-based testing. I also included in that language that basically if we get our Chromebooks in and we're able to process them, we may be able to change here and we may be able to do something. We have a month and some change. April is basically, the beginning of April is the first, the elementary test, so there may be time. But at this point, with the deadline looming for tomorrow, we had to request the computer-based exception. So that's sort of an informational item for you, but we did ask for those computer-based paper exams. I know that the principals have gotten used to the computer-based tests. There's really no packaging anymore. Having been a principal for a long time, as you know, part of the, I guess, excitement and frustration of the MCAS test was boxes and boxes and boxes of tests. Had to be wrapped, checked individually, eraser marks gone, had to be, it's a major, major event in a school, or it was a major, major event in school. And it's going to be again for the spring unless we get a bunch of Chromebooks in. So that was an informational item with regard to MCAS. We're still full steam ahead with the MCAS expectation. The state has not basically communicated to us how we're going to deal with our 600 students who are remote. Are we going to invite them in? Are they going to be able to opt out? Certainly, they're going to have to be able to opt out if they can't take the test in school. They are secure exams. You're not supposed to take them home. You're not supposed to make copies of them. You're not supposed to, they're used, some of the questions are used over and over. They do matrix sampling and all the rest of that. So there'll be more to follow with regard to this as the state makes better decisions and maybe as Middleborough gets better deliveries. So that's just an FYI update. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any MCAS questions?
And that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, hold on one second as I... There we go. So, next item on our agenda is the, um, high school building project and the school calendar. This is more related to the school calendar. We haven't had a high school building project meeting since the last time we spoke. So, thank you for taking care of the calendar. Um, next item is the consent agenda, um, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Just want to point out, this is just, um, approval warrants. Mr. Oakley, you had a question?
Sure, and I, I hope you don't mind me using it for this, but I, I appreciate the opportunity to look over the warrants and, um, I, I just try to pick one out, um, and just ask a question about it. And so, the, the warrant, the particular warrant article or line that I was curious about is warrant 279, page four. I was just curious, what is Cherry Road Technologies?
I will turn that over to Sarah, if Sarah's still around or if she hasn't left yet.
I'm still here. Um...
Thank you, Sarah.
I, I'm gonna, I apologize. Cherry Road Techno, could you repeat that part?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, uh, warrant 279, page four, and it looked like the whole page four was for Cherry Road Technologies. Um, I think there were just four items on it.
So, Brian, do you?
I do, I do. Uh, that particular company is a subcontractor for Comcast. Uh, and Comcast is, uh, doing a lot of work in our new high school. Uh, so that group came in and provides services for Comcast, but we pay them directly through the school building project.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And they are also, they're also our internet service provider for the district.
Got it. Thank you very much.
It's a third-party provider.
Cool. All right, that's all for me, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Um, with that, we also took care of everything as far as the items we needed to approve, so I appreciate that. I would like to make mention of the fact that the, uh, Ms. Cole gave a donation to the Family Resource Center, so we are most appreciative of that. And with that, does anyone have anything they want to bring up before the chair asks for a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Go right ahead.
I thank you for mentioning Betsy Cole. I think it's important. She just made a, a $300 donation, uh, she and her husband Bruce, uh, to the Family Resource Center. Um, no real reason or rationale behind it, just sort of a, a random $300 donation, but we certainly thank her very much and everyone that chooses to donate to our Family Resource Center. As you know, it's, it's a really, uh, important, especially this time, uh, during the closing time, the pandemic time. Uh, it's been an important resource for a lot of our families. So, we do thank Betsy. Uh, if you don't know Betsy, she was a longtime school employee, um, and, uh, she's also a soloist at Sacred Heart and Sacred Heart Church, the former Sacred Heart Church, St. Isador now, and, uh, with a absolutely gorgeous alto voice. So, thank you, Betsy, so.
No problem. And Brian, before you go, uh, there are a couple in the chat, there's a couple of questions about MCAS, which I don't... My sense is we can't answer questions about MCAS tonight because we don't know the full spectrum of what we have to do and who we have to do it with. But what we'll do is we'll save those questions and maybe at our next meeting, we can have a better idea of what MCAS will look like. Um, hearing from the state about what they're going to bring forth, if that makes sense, Brian?
I do see that question, and, and as part of MCAS, there are accommodations that are made for students, uh, for small groups, uh, and for a number of other things that are itemized in their IEPs. So, all of those accommodations will be met. Uh, it's just a matter of where they'll be met.
Right.
And that's the question, and those are logistics we have to work with, uh, with the school principals on. So, school principals are certainly central to the, the implementation of the, 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 the math test and English Language Arts test and science test of the, uh, of the MCAS, so.
So, that'd be great. Any other questions before we move on?
And just, I think, one further comment on that, that, that Rich actually pulled out that company on the warrant, page 274 of the warrant there. Um, or two, item 279. That company is a third-party company that provides the internet service for the district. Uh, we get federal money through what's called E-Rate. They basically provide 50% of costs associated with things such as internet service for a school district. Um, we do not, we can't get it for Comcast, but we can get it through a company that works for Comcast or through Comcast. So, that's the advantage of working through that third-party company. Oh, that's, that's my understanding, so.
Excellent. Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, I just learned about E-Rate, actually, at our last, um, uh, budget meeting, and, and, uh, it sounds like it's an awesome opportunity to defray some of our technology costs. And, um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for, for following up on that.
Thank you.
Um, with that, Chair wants to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It goes around Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we thank you for joining us, um, and we'll be back the second week in February, so, second Thursday in February. So, thank you, everybody, and have a very nice night. Thank you.